An important change in our weather. We pray tonight for those people who have had major losses in their life, whether family or friends or others that they've known. We pray for those people who have such losses that will have to be dealt with in many ways for a long time. We thank thee for all the first responders all over, all over our country, but especially these last few days in our part of the country. We thank you for, for men and women who are willing to give of themselves, their time, their energies, their hard work to help people who need the help. Father, we love this city. We thank thee for the opportunity to serve this city. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, since no change of agenda, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes for the March meeting? Does anybody have any changes or additions to the, to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Tenen. Do I have a second? Second by Billy Barnfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh, this is the time of the meeting where we have a public forum. If there's anybody present who would like to speak to the board, uh, you can, uh, make your way down front and state your business. Seeing no one has jumped up to come down, I guess nobody wants to speak. So, uh, do I have a motion to close the public forum? Motion to close by Billy. Do I have a second? Second by Grady. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Forum is closed. Item number four, uh, requests a six-month extension of a fire hydrant installation requirement at two fourteen Hasty Drive. Is there anybody here to represent this item? Uh, they did not come last month as well, and we said that if he didn't come this month, I believe that we were going to go ahead and, and, uh...
Take a vote on it without them here. Yes, they were notified to be here, yeah.
And, uh, so, um, so we can go ahead and vote to, to extend it for six months, or we could vote to just...
That's correct. Yeah, what it is, is the fire hydrant, we gave them a six-month extension back in September to install. They've agreed to install it, it's just the timeline. Yeah, our options would be, you know, we could approve the six-month extension, we could deny it. I think we just talked about not doing any further deferrals on it, so.
Are there any, um, discussions from the board on what you'd like to do?
Adam, did they contact you back at all?
Yeah, I sent them an email, they responded. I mean, something could have happened on their, you know, on their behalf, but yes, they were aware of the meeting, so.
I would think that if, um, if we do extend it, we would stipulate that, uh, this is absolutely the last time for an extension.
I agree.
And then after that, it'd be, uh...
We would go through our process for a minute.
Uh, yeah.
Court process, yeah.
Court process or whatever. So, uh, but that's just my opinion, I don't know if anybody else has a different opinion.
Mr. Chairman, so this will be two months into it. Do you still want to give six months, or you're going to give four months if it comes back up?
Good question.
Yep. Y'all can make that determination if you want to do, um, what's it be, April, so August? September would be a full year, but yeah, you could say by August, the first of August, if that's what y'all want to do.
All right, do I have a motion related to this?
I'll make a motion to extend it until August, our August meeting.
Okay. Do you want to stipulate what happens, uh, after that, if the...
I mean, it, it would be, assuming that if they don't do it after then, we would go through our administrative process, court if needed, so.
Okay, do we need to put that in the motion, or can we just infer to them privately, this is what's going to happen if that...
I mean, like, I guess they already knew that would be in the process. I don't think in the motion, you just say, if you all want to give them to August, you say, we give them August to get the hydrant in, if not, then we will go through our...
Okay.
I would just make the motion to...
Okay.
Just to, that it has to be taken care of by August.
So we have a motion from Mayor Tenen, we have a second from Judy Wheeler. Do we have any further discussions on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of extending this, uh, to August first meeting, say aye.
Aha.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is Provost Carr requests site plan approval for a 10,079 square foot building addition and site parking alterations at eight hundred South Cartwright Street. Is there anybody here to represent this item? If you would please come forward and state your name and, uh, position, and then Adam will take it from there for a few minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Clint Camp. I'm a civil engineer with Prosper Engineering. I'm the applicant on behalf of the rest of the team that's sitting here with us today. The site plan that we're requesting for approval is the first phase of a multi-step development process that we hope to be back in front of this group in the next couple of months to showcase what that, uh, next round of improvements on the property will look like.
Okay, we'll let Adam take it from here, then we'll come back to you in just a second.
Certainly.
All right, it's kind of a good problem to have, that, uh, their, their business is good, they feel like they need to expand their operations. Uh, this is existing, look at the, the property itself, uh, here, of course, I sixty-five Cartwright Street. So the proposal, the addition area, roughly ten thousand seventy square feet addition is on this side of the building. It's in the existing area where the parking lot is. Kind of show this drawing, this will be the actual, the building location here in pink. Uh, there is, because they are having to remove a couple parking places for their, this is for their coach vehicles, so they're wanting to do a temporary parking lot for the construction process, and then we'll see a future phase where this could be more permanent, and some other issues coming up more permanent, uh, like a phase two. Uh, building, uh, this building's got concrete, uh, tilted up, and it's a metal building, so it is industrial, they can do additional metals, so the base on the building will be an extension metal building to match the building itself. Staff stipulation, our consultant engineers still had a few, uh, comments, um, you know, Goodwill Tools under a new stormwater ordinance, and it's a little bit different than the one that a lot of people have used in the past for Metro, kind of, it was similar, but ours is a little different now on how you calculate the water quality, uh, design, so there's some questions on that remaining, but, uh, motion options would be approve the site plan with the listed staff stipulation. Basically, the stipulation was, uh, before we could issue any kind of land disturbance permit, we'd need those remaining comments to be addressed. As soon as Mr. Camp earlier, he's aware of them, and didn't have a issue with any of them. So more would be a motion to approve the site plan with that stipulation, two deny it during the meeting if the planning commission feels like, uh, there's additional items needed or defer it. But this is the first phase, we will see this back for phase two in the future, but I know they wanted to kind of get the building addition, the temporary parking underway.
Do you have anything to add to this?
No, sir, I think Mr. McCormick stole our thunder.
Okay, very good. Questions from the board?
No, sir, I don't have any questions. We got to tour this facility about, I don't know, two or three weeks ago with our, um, class that we're attending here in Goodwill'sville, and we met with this young man out here that threw his hand up. He gave us a wonderful tour, uh, very organized facility. Uh, I totally agree, if, if Adam's good with it, I like everything they're doing here, so. If anybody else has any questions other than that, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this item. Do I have a second? Second by Billy Barnfield. Are there any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Hearing none, all those in favor approving this request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all are a good neighbor to Goodwill'sville, so, uh, appreciate you being here. All right, uh...
Yeah, made a good point, that, that motion was to approve with that stipulation.
Yes, yes, it was.
Yeah, basically, complete the engineering stuff, so.
Yes, that's the reason I said, as long as Adam approved it, with Adam's approval, yes. That was in my motion, I think, I did say that.
All right, um, item number six, and Adam, I'll just turn it over to you for the...
All right, this is a zoning ordinance amendment, uh, recommendation to our city commission. Several years ago, if y'all remember, we did, uh, revision to our zoning ordinance to do adult-oriented businesses regulations and define them in certain industrial districts. There's been a concern about, um, possible private clubs operating in the city that, for better or better, consider them like a swingers-type club, uh, so we did some research and found where Metro has an ordinance, and this is borrowed from Metro Nashville, if you remember a couple of years ago, the issues they experienced there. Basically, what it would be, we have different provisions in our ordinance now. This is including the definition of a sexual encounter club, uh, which would be like, like I said earlier, uh, a lot of, you know, these adult-oriented businesses, ordinances are performance-based, and the reason this wasn't regu- originally included, and the reason why Metro's is in a different section of their ordinance is that it's, that's a little, this is different. This is, uh, like a private membership club-type facility, uh, but what this will be, we will be putting this section in our ordinance also, so if a use like this is proposed, uh, then they would have to follow the ordinance on our location limitations in our adult-oriented businesses. Tim and Russell and I met, and Russell requested some suggestions from the Metro ordinance revisions, and I included those, pretty minor stuff, but, uh, so this is what this, this ordinance is, is to include that kind of use, um, in our adult-oriented business regulations. Oh, options, motion options. One, we could recommend approval to the city commission as presented, uh, if there's any requests of, this board could defer this, or we could recommend denial of the amendment to the city, uh, commission as the ordinance presented. But this is based on a Metro Nashville ordinance for a similar type issue, so.
So this would... I guess my mind's been boggled a little bit. So this would make it okay for an establishment like this to be in Goodwill'sville under certain zoning requirements?
Just like we would, like a, a club, like a strip club kind of use, it's, it's basically putting it under the regulations similar to that, so.
What happens if we just say no?
Well, we can't by law outlaw any use entirely, we have to define a location for them. And if State of Tennessee a couple of years ago did minimum separation distances from businesses to schools and daycares and things, so that's in there too, so it is very, it does limit it, but we defined an area, it's IG and the Industrial General Zoning District, where the use would be permitted. You know, at this point, there's no properties available, you know, they're developed properties, but it would have to be something, someone would have to redevelop, but our understanding, we can't just say, you can't do the use period, you have to provide a location for them.
Chairman, true, if, what happens is, if we do not offer a location, then it can go anywhere it wants to go. Um, and what this does is set specific parameters if that should happen, uh, of where they can be to assure that it's in areas that, um, works best for what that business is, I guess. When I say works best, I'm talking about away from the public and, and things of that
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? Um, Mr. Ellis, I assume you and Russell and Adam have fine-tuned this the best we can without saying no, I, I would assume, correct?
Yeah, sir, we met, as Adam referenced, uh, I guess three weeks ago now, um, there is one piece that, that I want to, before just the second reading with the planning commi- city commission, is in regards to facilities like an event center that may rent it for, to make sure it's fine-tuned, to, to include that, but, uh, uh, yes, we've, we've all met and discussed, and Adam has spent several hours researching other locations of, of, um, similar nature.
Russell's big question, he, uh, the Metro ordinance, it was under the, at the bottom down there, talk about new members, it was twenty-one and over, and Russell did not feel there was any, we had a basis to regulate the eighteen to twenty-one age, so ours would just apply to adults, like the rest of our adult-oriented businesses would be, it's just, you know, adult eighteen and over, that was his concern, so.
Could you give me an example of where one of these, uh, where in Goodwill'sville one of these locations could be?
Anywhere it's got a storefront.
I thought, I thought it had been an industrial area.
Kind of not, I'm not following your question.
All right, if we pass this, if the city commission passes this, and somebody comes in here and wants to, to open up one of these establishments, where in the city could they go? In the industrial zoning...
The area is primarily Cartwright Street.
Okay, that's where I was getting, I didn't know.
Like I said, it's a developed property, so someone would have to purchase the property or rent it and lease it and remodel it and redevelop it.
So they couldn't be in the public shopping center?
No, it's only in the Industrial General Zone District.
Industrial General, like Cartwright or, or, uh, one of those areas?
Yeah, and there's areas, we have Industrial General, there's some small areas over here on, like, Car- Church, but Connell kind of limits those areas, it does its location, because they can't be within a thousand feet. That's the only area of the city we have where there is limit, there is not that limitations for dimensions.
Okay.
I know, um, because, trust me, I, I have issues with it too, but, um, it's not that we are in any way promoting, it is trying to limit...
Right.
If that should happen.
Well, I appreciate the explanations I was giving on that, and, um, so, um, I guess, we'll be looking for, uh, for a motion to approve or deny, or whatever the boards, uh, would like to do, unless there's any more discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, Adam, have you been contacted at all by anybody about such a, such an, such an outfit?
Uh, to think about these use honestly, I don't think anyone's ever going to state that's what the intention is, but no, we have not been contacted to do this type facility. We get a lot of requests for event center, which I think they're becoming more popular, uh, you know, economy, we're kind of seeing people like, uh, not necessarily this, but like having facilities and parties and stuff like that, it's kind of being more popular. We've had a lot of requests for that, you know, we've got several buildings in Goodwill'sville that kind of served that purpose over time, but for someone to come out and say this use, no, no one's asked for this, so.
Any further discussion? So I'll be looking for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Billy Barnfield. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mayor Tenen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, that's a, that's a new one for the books for me, so. Anyway. All right, we're through with the agenda items, and now we're ready for the discussion So, Adam?
All right, just quick, uh, we had our first comprehensive plan review of our process, all vote, we think it's going to take all twenty, twenty-five, had it in March, uh, we're going to plan a new, another one in April twenty-eighth, that's Monday, April twenty-eighth, six P.M., and the goal is to have, uh, at that meeting, discuss some possible development scenarios, we're working on it with our consultant now, uh, so anybody interested, definitely come out for that, will be Monday, the twenty-eighth of April at six P.M. here in this facility. Uh, next thing we'll jump into is, uh, part of the city adopted moratorium in December twenty, twenty-four for multifamily, also include looking at our ordinances. Uh, last month, we talked about some different scenarios, and you all asked me to look at some different communities around, it's kind of what they do, and I put together a chart, uh, there are two different things, really, about the building materials and garage, and not all our surrounding communities, some south of Nashville that I feel like are the ones, uh, they're kind of looked upon for these kind of things. Uh, one thing about the residential building material requirements, uh, cities are all over the place with this, um, I think our primary look is in planning developments, you know, like new master plan developments, uh, and a lot of these cities, and I'll read through some of their suggestions, I didn't want to mention names, because I know, uh, because sometimes master plan processes can, can change that, so I didn't want to call that out or anything, but most of these cities with master plan-based communities, that master plan can fluctuate those requirements. You know, certain designs can come in with a look of material that can look nice in a certain setting, and some cities have allowed those in a master plan community for the, like, associated look, uh, or sometimes the, the cities can push for more in those master plans, go way beyond their standards. Uh, so, just a couple rundown here, right now, we require in our planning developments, residential, uh, fifty percent brick or stone on all building, new residential, uh, and we also require the foundation to be brick or stone. Uh, so going through the list, uh, this is the range of things here, number two is, uh, seventy-five percent, I've seen some communities require that, and that seventy-five percent brickstone or siding, they allow wood or cement fiberboard, now the name everybody hears is hardy board with that, so they're including hardy board within that seventy-five percent per materials, but they do require a brickstone foundation design. Uh, this city has a lot of limitations on the colors, the number of primary materials, you can't change your primary materials on the sidewall, I can't have a brick front, turn it, have a side on the side, they require certain foundation heights, but they do allow the different materials. Um, now, number three is, talks about a hundred percent brick or stone or cement fiberboard siding with brick foundations on any residential planning development house, so it requires all houses to have brickstone or cement fiberboard with that common thing in there, the brickstone foundations when you do your siding. Uh, number four, they have a range anywhere from thirty-five percent to sixty-six percent brick or stone, depending on the different districts. I've seen homes in that community a hundred percent brick in neighborhoods, and I've seen all hardy board in neighborhoods. Like I said, sometimes when you see projects, it can be either the city pushed them beyond, like, due to some neighbors' concerns, they push the standard, or in some cases, the developer themselves will go beyond the minimum, so it's tough to look at neighborhoods sometimes and think that's what the city requires. Uh, number five, front facades only to be a hundred percent brick or stones with other materials determined with the project master plan process. Really, the key there is the visibility of the other walls and then the, the area itself. And then one was seventy percent brick or stone on all new residential homes. You know, uh, one was big about the master plan, it really depended on the area and the, the plan reviewed by the, the planning commission and elected board. Also, a big deal, uh, what we talked about was the garage orientation, those are two, probably the two biggest things you see when you talk about residential design centers from our standpoint. Number one is still, again, master plan-based development, uh, so they kind of looked at the community that's in, the surrounding area to see if it fits in with that. Uh, number two is, uh, when they have lots that are less than sixty feet wide, so you're smaller, the residential lots, there's limitations on the garage orient door, orientation and garage door width, and that garage door width cannot exceed forty percent of the width of the home, so if you've got a, you know, a thirty-foot home, uh, I don't know what forty percent would be off the top of my head, but that garage door on the front cannot exceed that dimension. Uh, number three, development review process includes limited percentage of garage doors fronting a street, not only multiple single garage doors. This was something I noticed, uh, through several city ordinances, the goal to have like a fourteen or sixteen-foot garage doors, a lot of them, if it's fronting the street, they can allow that, they require individual garage doors instead, like two nine-foot is the typical doors, instead of one large door, just the look of it to have, to break up that facade. And then, in that particular location, they've required the garage be front at least, recessed at least ten foot beyond the front line of the home, was similar to what we have. Uh, number four, twenty-foot minimum recess garage front doors, they push that front door back, uh, where they do allow the front-loaded garages, and, and then, again, this is a common theme, front, the garage door should not exceed forty percent of the front of the home, the width of it, and then they also prohibited the double garage doors, so it would be individual, single doors. Uh, number five, uh, twenty-five percent, uh, limited front-loaded garages, so when a development, they come in, developer, because they got a hundred lots, twenty-five of them can be front-loaded, the goal is to have them intermixed in the development, but then it also requires the front-loaded garages to be recessed twenty-five feet, but for in the front of the house, for, I'm sorry, where it wouldn't be considered a front-loaded garage, it'd have to be at least twenty-five feet from the front low, uh, front line of the house. A lot of those recessed garages also, we have that provision now, they can do it at minimum ten feet. It also allows you more parking, you know, off the street, uh, so you can see, we're not that far out of line with what a lot of these cities have on these issues, uh, so kind of going through some ideas, you know, we talked about in the past, to possible amendments to our ordinance, and y'all, any question, get along with these, but let me know, but number one, if something about our uses, there was concern that in our planning developments, we were permitting certain uses maybe we didn't want to see going forward, uh, kind of the idea of maybe larger, single-family lots, uh, lower density, uh, and in our planning development ordinance right now, in the low density, it allows both attached, single-family and detached, and attached two-family. The example would be on Terra Lane, and those type units would be permitted in our low-density planning development, you know, the cottage growth community, it's considered medium density, they're attached units. Uh, that, my suggestion on that would be, if, if we're concerned with lower, we're going to see lower density going forward in that low-density planning development district, maybe that's a district where it's homes only, you know, we don't allow any kind of attached product. Uh, number two, minimum square footages, the reason I didn't do another chart for this of the other communities, there's really no, nobody else really has anything in our surrounding areas. Now, you see projects, you go forward, master plans, you hear about community improvement, like I said, these master plan communities, you know, if they come in and the surrounding area is all twenty-eight hundred square foot homes, say, a lot of cities in the county pushes bigger homes in that area for surrounding, so we really don't have a lot of, uh, requirements or examples to go off of. Suggestion there would be, if the city wants to look at something, maybe a two thousand square foot requirement for a single family, uh, a fifteen hundred square foot on any kind of two-family detached, and then twelve hundred square feet for attached units. I know that this community, this board, when we see projects come in, there's a lot of concern about how big the units are, a lot of questions are, and it, I would think if we define something minimum up front, we have that, it could still leave y'all room for negotiation, like, when a project actually comes in, if, if larger, but we're kind of going to uncharted territory, a lot of communities do not do this, this is basically usually the master plan product, you know, someone comes in and just real small-town homes and small homes, that's reasons for some communities to deny, to deny those proposals. All right, number three, it talks about, uh, requirements for on-site attached garage requirements in our, uh, certain districts, we're talking primarily about our planning developments. Right now, it's master plan-based, so if they come in with that attached product, this board could say, um, no, we don't want to see that, we want to see attached garage product. Possible amendment suggestion would be all one and two-family and semi-detached dwellings, and attached dwellings to include, uh, minimum garage requirements of two-car, then if you did like townhomes, it'd be a one-car kind of a, uh, requirement. That's something we can talk about if we want to do a two-car of everything, but one-car seems to be common with townhouses, uh, maybe some of the smaller ones, but, uh, I bet, I think it would be good for us to find that expectation in our planning development ordinance, so we want to see attached garage with these. I could see in some development communities, if they get into the apartment-type projects or townhouse-type communities, maybe have a separate area where people can lease separately a garage, you see that more in the apartments, but it could be something we see with more multifamily, townhome-type communities. Uh, garage orientation, right now, we allow thirty-three percent of, like in a large project, to be front-loaded, uh, to not be considered front-loaded, they have to be recessed, ten foot back from the front of the house, courtyard side-loaded, they have to be rear-loaded, alley-loaded, which, we don't have a lot of those type developments, a lot of our topography, uh, so possible would be our suggestions, uh, amendment suggestion, we reduce the number of front-loaded garages from a third to a quarter. loaded garages from a third to a quarter of a project, 25%. Increase that, that front loaded recess requirement. Right now, it's 10. I think there was some concern about that being too small, increase that up. Look at doing the garage doors, it's 89 foot in any kind of settings where it's, maybe is one of those front loaded, one of the 33% we allow now, maybe it's a recessed front or courtyard side loaded. Maybe look at those type instances. We also limit the size of garage door to individual versus one large one. If they put it on the backside of the house or on the side, you know, at the back of the house, that's, that's one thing. But maybe out front, concerned about the looks of those, so.
Adam, on the front loaded, I think we had talked a little bit about, can we put those in the back of the developments? I mean, is that, would that be written in this or is that something just when they come to us, we would suggest that they, that they do?
We could, we could change that and put it in there. I know, like I went through Durham Farms this weekend, it's a good example, if y'all got to see it. When you drive through the main drives, you don't see a lot of the front loaded, but on their, when they got like perimeter projects or maybe kind of off the front drive, that's where they do some of the recess fronts. Yes, that could be something we put in there, the key would be to locate them in areas not visible from main roadways, we could add that section. Sometimes with our properties and our elevations we got, some of those are going to be perimeter. I don't know if y'all have ever been to West Haven in Franklin, absolutely stunning developments. It's really not fair to compare anything to that because that's so high-end. But you'll go through that neighborhood, different, different housing, but they have perimeter lots and they've got some steep slopes and those are typically where their recess fronts are. And they look great. I mean, they really do a good job with them.
I had them on a typical 2,000 square foot home, how wide or how deep would a, would a house be?
It depends, it depends on their width. You know, we see how a lot, some of the neighborhood homes, in their 40-foot width range, some of those will go, you know, 50-foot back. It really depends on their layout and how the garage is, because the garage takes up, you know, a two-car garage roughly 400 plus square feet.
I was just thinking if we recessed that back, I mean, one example is 25-foot back, it seemed like it'd be, the house would be long or deep enough to accommodate 22-foot deep garage.
It would affect, it would be certain design home, that's correct, yes. The lots would be, those would be.
I don't know how deep my house is, but it's not, it's not 40 deep, 40 foot deep.
And you're, yeah, you know, it really depends on the house design, you know, the newer homes, of course, they're built on smaller lots, that's what they're looking for. So they'll make them narrower and longer. These perimeter lots with a front loaded, recessed front loaded, it's going to be deeper lots. So they're going to have to plan for it really when they lay out their project, this is the only area we're going to be able to do these. It would, it does change the floor plan around, like how you enter the home, yeah. Garages, like we always talk about residential lot, that defines more than anything on a neighborhood, how the garage orientation is. That defines how the streets, how the building sits to the street. You know, a lot of developers, of course, they love maximizing, and I mean, it's a business, I mean, as they probably should, but you know, when you look at a street per 1,000 feet, they're looking at how many houses they can get to offset those costs. Because road construction, you know, sidewalks both sides, thick roadways, curb, we could do 24-inch curbs, underground utility, those are very expensive. So they're trying to maximize per linear foot, how many lots they can get. And that, the goals have narrower 40-foot, 50-foot lots, that can really help them out on that. I know there's been a lot of pushback to that look. So yeah, it would change some of the home plans that'd be able to go in some of these neighborhoods. You know, the project we saw in Long Hallup, the concern, planning commission was talking about 90-foot plus lots, similar to what's in the old section, the first section of Copper Creek. It's not old, but the first section of Copper Creek Windridge, those are wider lots, they got courtyards, but you have to have that dimension, you know, do different things with your garage, because those aren't front loaded garages, those sections. But the back section of Copper Creek, they are front loaded garages, little smaller Tonight, we're not voting anything, this is just to kind of, we're just continuing discussion. You know, the goal was for us to have these ordinances defined before the moratorium expires in December, so we've got time. So that's why I've been putting it as a discussion, Adam. Anything y'all request, like last time, you want to see what some other communities did, put that in, we can keep bringing these back, discussing it. Materials, talking about the housing materials, right now, we do 50% brick or stone with a brick or stone foundation. I know the planning commission, we've discussed any part from 75 to 90%. And we look at some of the other communities, I think the 70, 75% is not, is consistent with some of the others. But the question's really about the, the hardy board material, because as you've seen, some cities, they permit that, just like they do brick or stone. Right now, we limit that as a secondary material, no more than 50% of the house, so. I think that's going to be the big issue, materials going forward for us. Mixed use, we talked about requiring a commercial component in our, so if someone comes in, wants to do a multifamily project on one of our main routes, we've seen them on Conference, Dickerson Road, North Main, you know, and a lot of the time, the planning commission's pushback is, we want to see commercial. We're, we're willing to understand that maybe some of these areas could support residential high density, but we don't want to give up our commercial potential. This was a big deal with the Stonebridge project, we required the commercial upfront. And the recent project on Conference proposal that was denied due to this reason. Right now, we don't have a minimum dimension. So what I put in there would be, require so much per 1,000, 100,000 square feet of residential. So if a project come in with 200,000 square feet of apartment buildings, they'd have to have a minimum 10,000 square foot commercial component. Or, you know, the planning commission could, in certain areas, require more of that. I think it would be good to have at least some defined ratio. I did get pushed back, last month, we talked about doing 10,000 per 100,000 square feet one apartment developer, like that might be a little bit much, but, so I could see if it's a, you know, a 400,000, 500,000 square foot apartment complex, which that don't take long to get when you've got buildings that big. And what we would have here, proposal would be a minimum 10,000 to any project of commercial, but then maybe we could drop that down to 5,000 per 100,000 and looking at projects. But I think the goal, what I kind of picked up from the planning commission, we want to see some level in certain areas. If they're going to request that, we want to see commercial with it. Now, this, with a comprehensive plan, you know, there's a lot of push, maybe not have multifamily, but in key areas like the mall redevelopment area or the commercial core. So we're probably not going to see a lot of this going forward if that's our, you know, comprehensive plan goes forward to define multifamily only at certain areas. But this would be something to put in there if we do have a project come in, we think it could be beneficial, but we still want to require minimum commercial component.
Adam, you referenced, you got pushed back on the 10,000 per 100. Was the pushback here or?
No, it was a apartment developer. They felt like that was a lot, jumping off the bat and.
Well, and I see their point, they're there to make money, but we're also most likely surrendering a commercial property for that. So I, I was just curious what, what the pushback was.
So that's something we could look at, like I suggested, we have a minimum 10,000. So if the apartment building was on like 85,000 square feet, smaller one, we still want a minimum 10,000 square foot commercial. And that commercial couldn't be like the rental office, you know, it can't be like the GM forum, you know, we have a lot of that, we put that in there. And this would just be kind of mixed use proposals. This would not be part of the Rivergate Mall, the Rational Center, we already have regulations on that, commercial at different locations. This would be primary, anything coming in new on like Conference Drive or Main Street.
So for example, the, the one over on Conference Drive that they were trying to put in, how many square feet roughly were, were their buildings told enough to be?
It was probably in the 300,000 range.
Okay, about how many, about 200 apartments that they were bringing in?
Yeah.
Okay, and so in that case, it'd have been 30 instead of the 10 that they were looking to do.
Yeah. And unfortunately, with that property, if that corner didn't have those two drains going through it, the stream, I mean, there's two blue line streams going through that corner of that property. I think that the idea for more commercial could be there. Unfortunately, that property has got that, so it's going to be hard to build anything on the corner. In the corner is the best commercial, but. So it's just, it's something we're going to see, you know, I, I feel like we have the Rivergate Mall area, not just the mall, but the area surrounding, where we've already kind of said, that can be 25 units an acre. So we kind of say, we're thinking that way on that, you know, with the project we approved a couple of months ago into the city commission, we've already got plans approved on the actual mall area. And then the commercial core overlay area, we defined probably over a decade ago for multifamily. I think those two areas alone, if we just say, hey, that's where we want to see multifamily going forward, we've already kind of said, those are like true mixed use areas. Yes, I think some ratio, I hate not to put some number on it, because if you don't put some number, then it'd be, they'll come here wanting to be up for negotiation, which that's not necessarily a bad thing, but I think to define what we're expecting of these developers, I can present to them like, you know, we're going, this will be a minimum square footage, you don't meet this, don't waste their time, kind of deal. Because right now, it's like, push as much commercials you can, what's the number? We don't really have a number. We just want to see more than nothing, basically. But that was it, just to kind of think, you know, you don't have to say tonight or anything, y'all, any thoughts about it, let me know. We'll, we'll probably maybe not do this in May, maybe come back in June, any kind of feedback to kind of look at doing that. My goal would be late this summer, we do an amendment to include these items. About this one, you ought to kind of think more, see those are the other examples we had, so.
So Tim, begin what your stance is on hardy board in this?
You know, a lot of communities consider, you know, hardy board a primary material. I mean, you can go through Durham Farms, the One Out Beach, you know, that's a great looking community that Phillips Homes did. I think what really makes those communities look nice is there's a mixture of housing types and materials. They're not all just one type. You know, you might have an all-brick house next to an all siding, like a cement fiber board siding home, but it really is part of the community and the look, but.
What I don't like, and it was covered, I think at least once in here, I don't like an all-brick front and all siding back. You know, that to me is just, just cheapens the house and, you know, and you look at houses that were built 10 years ago and look at them now, you can really tell that it's, you know, it's dated.
And that's one of the one community I mentioned, they would not allow material to change, a primary, a house has to have two primary materials on it, they don't want more than two. I mean, I've seen, I've seen some nice homes with a lot of different materials, they can look great, you know, but it, but in a community, what they're saying, they don't want that look, they don't want to do 100% brick, then turn and be siding, they want to carry the brick around. The requirement to have the brick foundations in the base, like a darker masonry material, I think that really adds a lot to the home, so. I mean, personally, the modern looking home, a lot of people like the, the fiber board look, you can do neat things with it. But I think it's part of a project design, but what you have seen with those is the, you know, the foundation, it's just up next to a concrete foundation. I think that kind of gives it a bad name sometimes, but you know, the material can look great, it's a look a lot of people like. Yeah, some communities consider it just like bricks.
I think it depends on the style of the house, you know, is, you know.
So the neighborhood back here behind Pete Park, is that hardy?
It is, yeah. It has, if I remember right, the front has a mixture of brickstone minimum. There's some homes that have more, just because the homeowners can choose, you know, all these people offer all brick, if they want, people can upsize it or up-sell it, but that part views hardy board, I don't have the brick or stone foundations, there's a hardy board and then on the front, mixture of brick and stone.
I'm not a hardy fan, but if it's used in the 20% range mixed with stone and brick, then I think, then you can get your character you're looking for and still have a better product than what we have back there.
I remember on that, in that development behind Pete Park was, they proposed, if I'm not mistaken, they proposed taking some off the front and sides to, to put a foundation around all four sides, and that was, that was denied, and I always thought that would have been a good idea to lessen, to get more in the rear.
Yeah, I encourage y'all, if you're, you're around communities, go through some of the newer ones that are in construction, just to kind of see some of the look. You know, you can see examples, good and bad, but there's some neat stuff out there, some unique designs, you've seen these, some of these communities, so.
Also wanted to, you know, you'd mentioned on this, minimum square footage of 2,000. How would that affect people who are starting out and people who are, you know, wanting to downsize? I mean, you know, that's.
Yes, that's correct.
That, that, that's a, that could be a pretty hefty square footage for either one of those.
That's correct.
Age groups.
And that's what we talked about right off the bat when we started talking about this, these are the kind of things that do affect housing cost, you know, materials, minimum size, garage orientation. Like I said, because the developers, their goal is to maximize that linear footage, number of homes per foot of row, and I would be the same if I was them, I just don't know how the business side of it works. But yes, it will impact it. I mean, at my stage in my life, I wouldn't want 2,000 square feet, but it really depends on your, your setting in your life. I mean, a lot of people would rather have more than that, it's just really what you want to see. But yeah, it is, we, that's our minimum on top of a two-car garage, the house is easily 2,500 square feet right off the bat, so. And some people, that's big, some people, it's not, you know, it really depends what you're looking for. Yes, it does, anytime we do these kind of things, it does out, you do all these requirements, all these minimum requirements, it, it is taking some buyers out of the market or the, in a certain neighborhood, so.
I guess if you had a, had a, had a community planning, and you had a lot of 3,000 square foot homes, and all of a sudden you have a 1,200, 1,500 square foot home, that's going to lessen the property values in that subdivision, would it not?
You know, that's pretty common, you know, all the developers, you see these large, when you get into the large, not like 30, 40 homes, but large, they want the different products available. It really depends on the quality of the development. I mean, I don't really think a neighborhood that has all, you see mixed developments like that. Like I said, West Haven, I know they're, that's not a great example because they're so high-end, but they've got all that stuff. They got condos, townhouse, all that. There's several in Nashville area, and there's several, you'll have high-end home communities next to townhouse communities. I don't know if they're comparable, you know, when they look at the property values, if that brings it down, I think that it possibly could, depending on the quality of it, but, but you can still see million dollar homes next to townhouse communities, so it really depends, I guess, real estate's tough. You know, we're, we're, we're about regulations and materials and the building, how it's laid out, then the value of it could be different. But a lot of people, every project we ever seen for rezoning, for any of that, that's always brought up, it can harm property, but if it's not just like what my house is, kind of deals.
I got several earfuls when we were discussing that property down Long Hallup Pike or outside the city limits, and that was less square footage, and that was going to bring down everybody's property value all up and down that area.
That's a general, yeah, feeling, yeah.
And I didn't, I didn't look at it that way, so I got more of an earful. But, you know, it's just, I, I would like to know sometime how that does, how that will affect existing property owners that might have a little bit bigger house and, you know, down the road.
Okay, I'll reach out to some developers and, because anything we put out, I want everybody to be, I want everybody to be aware of it upfront, and if a developer wants to come to, some of the local ones, maybe come discuss this with you guys, their thoughts on it.
I, I would like that myself.
My take, I mean, if they strategically place the smaller ones in those new neighborhoods and the quality is outside the brick or whatever, stays the same and the quality on the inside of granite and every, I don't think at that case, it would take down the square foot of the other houses in the neighborhood.
And you know, a lot of, like I said, a lot of developers, that's what they want to see, I mean, they're not going to propose a development that's going to automatically reduce their sales. You know, it just, like you said, I think it's the quality development, and we're talking about planning development projects. We're not talking like if somebody bought a lot, you know, a four-acre lot, and they want to build a house on it. We're, we're talking about stuff that's in a, a planning development that's typically condensed, and they're looking for a, a theme, a design theme throughout it, so. But the, a lot of times, the townhouses are for property, people maybe don't want the 3,500, can't afford the 3,500, but like the community, the amenities, that's why they like to offer the different varieties.
I have a gentleman back there, wanted to ask a question, I'll allow it?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I have a realtor.
Oh, okay.
I can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. I can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just want to put some information out there. I am a realtor, when you're talking about having a smaller house compared to a bigger house in the same neighborhood, it does affect the square footage per cost. They value it out, they can adjust, most of the houses in that neighborhood, but you also have to think about when you have a two-story house and a person wants a one-story house because of their limitations of movement, they can't go up and downstairs, it does affect the whole, whole area, as long as the square footage is the same. So it doesn't always, always matter just because it's a smaller house compared to a bigger house. The amenities into it do affect the cost, but not in a positive way for everybody else.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
That was just for us to discuss tonight, definitely, you know, call me, email, we've got any comments. Well, like I said, we probably won't do this in May, but we'll come back in June, possibly start discussing it again, just kind of follow up with it, so. We've got time, we're in no hurry, but just wanted to put that out there, so.
Any other discussion items? Well, I promised you I'd get you out here before nine-thirty, and I've done that.
You did a good job, so.
Y'all have a good rest of the month.